Ready to go, Ms. Wardwell? Excellent, everyone? Great. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for August 24th, 2020, here at the middle, senior, high school learning conference. Vows for the pledged agents, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public, all whose students have been raised to follow their god, the principle of liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Please note, this meeting is being videotaped for cable. Let's start with the approval of minutes. Would I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from July 20th, 2020 school meeting?
Moved.
Moved. Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. I also have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the August 6th, 2020 school committee meeting.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
And second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And now for the superintendent's update. Mr. Wardwell?
Good morning. Good day, consultant. Can I just ask if Mrs. Dietrichson is on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can. Good, I'll be coming back here in a second. Just wanted to make sure I have this. We have posted and looking to appoint Julie Dietrichson as our new nurse. I think it's a really important position for us, especially during this very difficult time. So we're glad she spent a lot of time this summer already meeting with nurses, ordering our PPEs, which has been very important. And we're also, all the protocols and procedures that we have in place are following D E C, the DPH and the CDC guidelines. And most recently, when we came up with these West Bridgewater protocols, we had a really good meeting last week with West Bridgewater administrators, with Dietrichson, school doctors, Dr. Murphy, Ron Castro from the West Bridgewater Board of Health, April Panos, who is the West Bridgewater Board of Health public health nurse. And again, that group really started to fine tune the draft that Mrs. Dietrichson is going to talk about today. So Julie, do you want to give us some details on this draft and share your thoughts? That'd be great.
Sure. So I think it's important to mention that this is a working document. You know, as soon as, middle of last week, we had received updated guidance, so had to update this document, which we will continue to do so as things progress. So this is just an outline of where we are right now, August 24th, 2020. And what I want to remember as we go through everything that we're doing, from a public health standpoint, is that the prevention plan that we have in place, as we do for any communicable illness, is really what needs to be focused on, is what we know how to do and we can do it really well. Things like hand washing, hand sanitizing, if that's not possible, PPEs, wearing masks. We do have some written guidance on that for our district. And then enhanced PPEs for staff that is going to be working more closely with students in a one-to-one situation, so where they're not able to maintain that six feet of physical distancing simply because of the nature of their job. And then we also, we will be asking parents and staff to be screening themselves and their children daily for symptoms. And there will be a document that will be shared once it's finalized, but just a daily check for symptoms, and also considering potential exposures. So, and we can have conversations about that as we go, and that is included in this working document. As far as the actual, what this is going to look like, a lot of what this looks like comes through with people's questions about contact tracing. And so we have a chart that is based on D E C guidance, based on DPH guidance, and it goes through what we would do if an individual is symptomatic, or if an individual is a close contact. And Mr. Wardwell, did you want me to go through that? Just kind of highlight what this looks like?
Yeah, why don't you highlight? I know that these charts are adapted from the charts that are currently in our reopening plan, as well as the document that you mentioned for reference about the exclusion guidelines. So it's also a situation that we're going to share publicly once we get more definitive answers for this draft. If you're looking to the, if people are at home or they want to, it's the quick reference sheet for individual COVID-19 events. And again, we make it in West Bridgewater. So if you want to kind of highlight that, that'd be wonderful.
Sure. And I think that this even has been updated since that document, and like I said in the beginning, it will continue to be updated as more guidance comes. There was just a joint memo from D E C and DPH that kind of clarified some of the situations. So basically, if a person is symptomatic, they are going to be sent home, and it is recommended that they get tested for COVID. And if the person tests negative, then we will have a letter that will send home with the person, much like we have when a student doesn't pass a hearing revision, we send them home with a letter that needs to be filled out by a physician and returned. So it'll be similar to that. So if they are testing negative, they need to have written documentation, medical clearance to return, and they can return once they are asymptomatic for 72 hours, or three days. If the person tests positive, and this is for students and staff, then they are to remain home. And this is where contact tracing comes in. It's all dependent upon a positive test result. And so they would then be working with the Board of Health, they'd be contacted, excuse me, contacted from or by the Board of Health. They will be doing the contact tracing. The school will be assisting with that to identify who might be close contacts. And they need to stay home, according to D E C and DPH guidance, for at least 10 days and until symptom-free for 72 hours. If the person does not test, then we just treat them exactly as if they had tested positive, and this is just from the guidance, that they are to remain home in isolation for 10 days from symptom onset and until they're asymptomatic for three days. If their medical provider makes an alternate diagnosis, and these are a lot of the questions that I've had myself as a nurse and I've been asked, you know, we're going into the fall with a lot of allergies, and you know, we, it's not all going to be COVID. You know, we have to be very prudent about, you know, how we're following through with the guidelines. But there are going to be situations where the person does have an alternate diagnosis and they are okay to return with medical documentation. So we do have some language about that based on the guidelines. And then the rest of it has to do with someone who is potentially exposed to someone who is a positive case. And if that happens, the person should test, and they should be tested four or five days after exposure. And if they are testing negative, they still need to self-quarantine because they still, we can identify that they were potentially exposed. So according to the guidelines, they quarantine for 14 days and return to school once asymptomatic for 72 hours. If a close contact tests positive, same thing, as someone who is symptomatic, it kicks in the contact tracing for the Board of Health. We're working with the Board of Health to ensure that we identify who else may be exposed, and they would need to isolate for 10 days, return when 72 hours symptom-free. And if the person is a close contact and does not test, then they just must stay at home 14 days. And so these are the guidelines, you know, and honestly, this is just, this is D E C and DPH, and like Mr. Wardwell said in the beginning, we did have, and all throughout, have had a collaboration with our school physician and Board of Health. And they really are the driving force as they are the governing bodies, because this is a public health emergency. And so Dr. Murphy was extremely helpful and was very clear about what his recommendations were for these guidelines. So I feel like we all had a really good comfort level putting these into writing. And then it just goes on to, like you said, the exclusion guidelines, and like I said, it's August 21st. This might change a little bit this week, and we'll continue to update this until we return to school.
Thank you, Julie. Do you have any questions?
So could I just ask a quick question, Julie? So where would these protocols be found? Is there's a wonderful kind of a quick reference sheet that you have, that you put together?
Where would the district be able to find this? Is it going to be put on the website?
Do you not hear me? Mr. Wardwell, so right now it's in the final plan, but this all, once it is a final, or once this, this actual, the protocols, where this is a working draft, once the protocols are finalized and individualized, we will have those available, you know, as, I would assume, my feeling is separate documents. So there would be the quick reference guide, there would be the exclusion guidelines, and they would all be easily identified on the website. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep. Hundred percent accurate, and I think we hope to, again, knowing things could change, but I think by next, by the 31st, these will be complete for staff and parents and everyone to see these guidelines. Knowing that if guidelines do change or we give, you know, further information, then we will modify them as we see fit. All right. Thank you, Julie, for that information.
Thank you.
H D A C update. I want to update the committee and the public that we have done testing. We did contact with EnviroTest Labs. They came out last week. They did air quality testing, air exchange rates in the classrooms in all the buildings in the district. Also, just before I get into EnviroTest, and I'll leave also, Julie Hamlin, who I believe is on the line, brought in E N E Systems to inspect and repair the control issues at the elementary schools. Healthy Air Systems is another company that provides mechanical and mechanical support for the elementary, 3K and kindergarten. Air Masters Heating and Cooling is contracted to cover controls and mechanical issues at the middle, senior, high school. An energy management associate has been contacted to identify opportunities for ultraviolet, germicidal, I V G I lamps. So there's a lot of different companies that our head of building grounds, Mrs. Julie Hamlin, has been working with over the summer to make sure our buildings are safe for everyone to return. Unfortunately, like I said, the EnviroTest came out last week. They just finished the reports this afternoon, so I do not have all the report findings right now. I can give a summary, but my plan is to review their report more than just the verbal summary that I received, and we'll make that public to all, because we want to make sure everyone can see those findings. I know that we did, all the buildings, like I said, were tested. We did need to do some remediation at the Roseell McDonald School. We looked at several different bathrooms that needed some work. For example, there was a failed motor that has been replaced, and there were control issues, which Ms. Hamlin can explain in much more detail and accuracy than I can, but there were different ones that were needed to be fixed, and they were repaired, and the units are running well. The plan is to have EnviroTest come back and do another test, not just of those individual spaces, but of the entire building, and they'll complete that, put all that information into their report. So, Hamlin, are you on the line? I know that what they've tested is the airflow. They looked at all the different airflow in each of the buildings. They looked at the air exchange rates in each of the buildings. They looked at CO2 levels in each of the buildings, the humidity level, the temperature. Again, each report is very comprehensive, ranging from, the reports I've seen excluding the Roseell, I think from 28 to 30 different pages per school building. So there's a lot of information contained there. The, we want to get that out this week so people can review it, because we know it's a concern. It's a concern of staff, it's a concern of parents and students. We've said it before, our goal is to make sure every system is operating exactly how it should work. We want to make sure that people are in buildings that's safe for everyone to enter. And I don't know if the committee has any questions, so I can do my best to answer. And Mike, and the thought is, if I can't answer his questions, I'll direct them to Ms. Hamlin, or I'll direct them to the person who has done the testing. We have this contact information, and if there's follow-up questions that need to be asked, I can reach out to him and even post the frequently asked questions for parents or staff members who have follow-up concerns. The goal was to have the report in our hands earlier today, but we know that was also on a very tight timeline for them. We know they're very busy. This company does test other school buildings in the state, hospitals, and other spaces. So they're very busy themselves. Are there two other questions? I can serve as my best.
No, not Ms. Hamlin. Well, there's only one hand left, so she's going to come back to reconnect.
Okay. If she does reconnect, we'll let her jump in there.
Sure.
Reopening. So just as kind of a reminder, this is all covered in our plan, the first day for staff is Monday, August 31st. That will start our 10 days of professional development and training for our staff. We have a very comprehensive structured learning plan for our teachers during the time. We have some training and professional development that all will need to complete, and others that will be optional. We're looking to tailor it to the needs of our staff. Health and safety are a huge priority. Well, learning is a huge priority. Social, emotional health is also a major priority for us. So there's different things that we've been working with the administrators to tackle what's most important. And we also, now again, need to give staff time to develop their lessons, to be ready for coming back. The first day with students is September 16th, and on that day, they'll be in on those first three days, and we'll start the regular rotation after that. And after the principal, just to give a quick little update for the buildings, in our discussions, we know there's a lot of unanswered questions with schedules and so forth. That information will be going out very soon as we continue to develop and finalize our plan. So, Julie, you want to go first?
So starting at the Spring Street School, teachers have started to come in. The finishing touches have been going on for the cleaning. Teachers are anxious to get in and get their rooms set up under our new set of normal circumstances. I want to take a minute to just thank the parents who have been extremely patient with class placements and orientation. That information should be coming out within the next week or so, but we really wanted to wait and see what our numbers were going to look like before we sent that information out. So we will be having orientation for kindergarten. It'll look differently than it has in the past. We aren't able to do the typical bus ride to school in the morning, but the teachers will be setting up different times throughout the week for parents to come in with their children, to get to see the classroom, get acclimated, meet their teacher, and try to hopefully...
You're not being heard at all. I don't know. One of these...
It has to be from Mark's computer that probably...
Is that ever on?
That's not on.
Is that not even here?
They can't hear Mrs. Wardwell.
The caption's working on them. You want to come over here?
Closed caption. Do you want me to come over?
I know.
Want me to sit over there?
So Mr. Cray said you need to be closer to the laptop, wherever Mark is talking. There we go.
So, Spring Street School, teachers have been really excited to get into their classrooms and start studying. They have a lot of, you know, reconfiguration of classrooms, but you know, they're doing it with excitement and, you know, ready to kind of come in and begin normal that we have. I want to take a minute to thank the parents who have been extremely patient with class placements. They haven't come out yet. I'm really wanting to wait until Charlie and those are assigned to those classes. Teachers will be sending out information about orientation. Each teacher will offer multiple sessions for parents to come in to activate their classroom and the teachers, especially if you have a large, reasonable, or an age group that is going to be in class. The McDonald School, so we think teachers are already in. I covered fourteen today, and I have a couple of teachers away excepting their classrooms today. Again, class placement should be going out by under D E C, and we will be scheduling orientation for incoming first graders.
Thank you, Ms. Wardwell. Good luck.
Did that work on you?
Yes, yeah.
Good evening. So I just, before I say, I also want to send a huge shout out to two custodians, Keith Gallo and Sue Morrison, who all summer long have been rock stars in our building with rearranging and just preparing for the year, including multiple times they've come in and said, never mind everything we've done so far, we're going to completely redo it. And just gone with it. It's great. As Mrs. Wade said, teachers have started to come back. There's a lot of excitement to get back into their classrooms. Our work right now is, you know, we're kind of looking at certain spaces and figuring out maybe it better be switched some spaces for teachers based on the number of kids in that room. So we're kind of looking at that. And now we're starting to look at our outdoor spaces at school to figure out how we can best utilize those. Orientation is this Thursday. Because we didn't get the third graders to come up and do their visit in the spring, we're going to do a little different this fall. We're actually opening up one hour long orientation to the school. We're doing 10 of them over Thursday to Friday, and a child can come to the school with their parents, nobody else, just their parents, and they'll get, you know, a small group personal tour of the school and have a chance to ask questions and get a chance to really see the school up close. We're also working our cohort assignments. We're about 99% done, and we're about ready to send them out. So I think we had said the end of next week was to get your crew a shoot for it, and we're anxious to wait to have it.
Good evening. So similar to what the other person was talking about, we are getting excited to have the kids back. I love my office staff, but I'm really happy to see different faces come through. You miss the kids, I miss the kids, so getting excited. You know, I just hope that everyone knows we are working very hard, the custodians of maintenance staff, to get all areas of the building safe and comfortable. Still, right now, I'm here with the municipal teachers, and we need to put this out tomorrow. Now, we're actually going to be looking at the schedule as well, so that we can better... We've got some move-ins of the seventh grade, so we need to relook at it because we want to have as balanced class facilities as we possibly can. With that being said, I'm very lucky to have the two people at school that we have extra spaces that have been utilized, so now we got a really fortunate. We do have seventh grade orientation Thursday. We did open up a second day on Friday, and the following Wednesday, there are any new students, grade 8 through 12. I've had multiple calls of parents, don't ever hesitate to call each other. I will say that if you are unable to make the orientation, just off. You know, there's a few people I've had come in, just moved their own doors, and went happy to accommodate that. So any questions, concerns, don't hesitate, and we look forward to having that.
What about the virtual group?
I, we do have the virtual group. I love myself like the M R. So we did do that. If we were unable to do in person, so that's on the back burner. We're gonna, we're gonna, he makes it.
Thank you, building principals. Again, there's a lot that goes into reopening. It's been a very, very busy summer for everyone in the faculty and the local community, of people we want to thank over the summer, but I know the administrators have been tirelessly working to prepare our reopening plan, and you know, it is like building that plane in the sky sometimes. We're trying to do all these different things, and then things change a little bit, and one little factor may change in the plan or guidance from D E C that we've got a role with. But again, the goal is, the ultimate goal, is to get as many kids back to school, educate them, get our staff back, like I said in our last meeting. September 16th will be just over six months to be, ever been in the building. It misses them terribly. We want them back, but of course, we want them all back in a safe manner. Summer update. Continuing, you know, thanking the administrative team, the office staff in all the buildings for the extra time to make sure all these things are done. We sent out a lot of surveys. Oh, fiance, there are probably more surveys coming. We've been working with the seniors on our busing. They're looking at our two cohort groups, but they may do some fine tuning on that. But I thank the parents as well for their cooperation in getting those surveys back to us. Hiring new teachers has been a very busy thing all this summer. This is daily run, the wonderful new teacher orientation program, so that our new teachers are very fortunate to get a mentor in the building, and it'll be really important this year, should help develop those bonds and relationships. And our staff, we welcome this, because they're very helpful to one another. We're registering new students, people every day, and again, as you can imagine, we register new students, and that starts to affect that different cohort group. So again, we're looking for balance, and that's part of the reason why we haven't been able to share our information, is we're really looking to balance and make sure we have enough equity in each of the classrooms. And a huge thank you for the maintenance staff. They have all their regular duties, and I'm going to read a few of them, but there's all the other stuff that they've been asked to do this year. So just some of the things that they've been doing. They, at the Roseell Howard gyms, they rented lifts, they scraped, they tanned, they patched, and they stained, they painted the walls. They refished the Roseell Howard gym floor with their own staff. The Spring Street School kitchen, bathroom was prepped, primed, painted, they trimmed, painted all the walls in the kitchens. They replaced the regular ceiling tiles throughout the district, numerous floor tiles with the high school and Howard School, stripped and waxed floors system-wide, patch and painted damaged walls system-wide, completed all filter changes on all A C A P systems, cleaned all the classrooms, halls and offices. They installed partitions throughout the buildings in some of our smaller spaces to allow for more student accessibility. They put together all the PPE equipment in some of the offices, and they did stuff in all the kitchens. So their lifts is comprehensive, unregular summer. This summer was even more so, all that they did. So I'm very happy with Julie and her crew. They continue to work incredibly hard.
All right. And under business, we have Mrs. Page, the middle, senior, high school senior privilege permission slip for 21, 2021 school year.
So, so yeah, so the senior privilege sheet is the same, you know, changes the week. We are hoping to allow our seniors the privilege to go out on their privs with some, you know, specifics of social distancing. I will probably stagger them coming out, coming in. It'll allow the cat to actually lighten up a little bit during that first lunch, because the seniors with their dog will be less students in the building. But I think, you know, they wait for this from grade seven. So, you know, they've lost so much already that I would hate to not allow it, but I will tell them, you know, like anything else, it is a privilege. So they're going to have to kind of abide by all the rules, and in particular, when we get the kids back, we'll talk about, in addition to just, you know, the guidelines we have in place here, talking about the COVID, and how they need to stay social distance. You know, you're not going to go pack a car and go that way, then we'll be checking on them. So the ball will kind of be in their court. If they're responsible, we want to allow that for them.
Excellent. This is a voting issue? I'd like to have a motion to approve the middle, senior, high school senior privilege permission slip for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Moved.
Second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I say thank you for the standing.
So can I ask, is there a handbook?
Sure. That would be, the next would be the students.
So for the student handbook, the only changes are...
Um, so for the student handbook, the only changes are careful. Um, so any roles, dangers, um, you know, either with school committee, myself, Mr. Barwell, personnel, new hires, uh, those are the only changes in the, in the student handbook. The athletic handbook, uh, handbook, we had one small change. Um, and it really was, it was really just to keep both the student handbook and the athletic handbook, um, similar in, uh, verbiage. Uh, so on page four of the athletic code, um, all we're adding is, um, under the updated language, will not be permitted, the old ones are to participate, but we're adding in also to attend, um, in, uh, activity or practice if they have not been in school, are late. All the language is the same aside from, um, not just attending, but participate or attend. So, the attend is the new word, one word.
Okay.
So, it just makes it, um, common and parallel to the student handbook.
Great. Could I, um, just, um, I guess, ask for, um, a little, I, I guess, just given the whole pandemic and how we have a whole new set of, you know, rules and regulations and all that, would it be possible for, um, the buildings to put together a, um, interim pandemic handbook? Because the handbook as presented right now for all the schools is for what we used to know as life in school.
Yeah.
And we really should have something that should address all of these issues, attendance, grading, I mean, discipline, all of the kind of, um, pandemic affected areas.
Sure.
Would that be possible?
Together with, with, you have a building principal, it's not a bad idea, um, and almost like an addendum, you know, for students to come out of this crazy town.
Yeah.
Sure. And I, I think once we know too, um, that we find out everything's been agreed upon and, um, we can certainly put that together.
Okay. And then, um, if that, that can be something that we could, um, vote on next meeting. If you could just get it to us maybe in a couple of weeks before the meeting, just so we could review it. And then, any changes that you had now? I know it was just one word, but could you just get that to us, just so I can see how that lays out?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I don't know if that was sent and I missed it, might have missed it.
Yeah.
That would be great.
One thing we did talk about today in our administrative team was to kind of create a back-to-school informational packet that's going to go to the different buildings, which would function in a similar way to a handbook. We're just going to provide them that specific information, pulling stuff that's out of the reopening plan and providing it to students and parents. We also felt that it was important, as we get the teachers back, to get them involved in some of the planning, uh, will be helpful because we've always said all along, we have ideas of how things will work and how the movement of students and so forth. But again, the input of teachers is also going to be very helpful to us.
And I, and I, I agree. I think one of the principals said, um, the patience, you know, because I think this is such a fluid situation. So, you know, something that we think is probably the best idea we ever had, very flossed. So, I just think we need to, um, you know, just be willing to be patient and be able to change.
Can I think we had a frequently asked questions thing, document, is that something?
We have one, yes.
Yeah. That would even be a place where this, like, um, interim handbook kind of fall into that because it changes so frequently.
Definitely.
So, it shouldn't be frequently asked questions, it should be frequently changing answers.
Um, one thing I noticed too with the, um, handbook is that it does reference some of our, um, policies that we updated, so we probably want to get that changed. And I think it's just under the appendix, some of the policies, our old policies are still, um, listed under there. So, I can work with you, Mrs. Page, to, to get those updated.
Just what, um, Donna and I have been trying to, you know, um, push forward the, all the updated policies so that, um, Donna has spoken about having links. So, in the handbook, instead of having those three policies, I think at the end of the high school one, um, that are definitely outdated.
Massive laws.
Just to do.
To make it simple, it's always.
Updated, right.
Right.
And then, we could just have the links to all of the policies that are affecting each building, you know? That would be great. That's the plan. Okay. Okay. And for the elementary schools? Oh, should we just do it all at once or do you want to do separate votes for each building? All right. Um, could I have a motion to approve, uh, the Middle Senior High School, um, student handbook as presented with the, um, I guess, just addendum to be coming next month with respect to the COVID cer- situations?
And also the athletic handbook.
And the athletic handbook, yes, thank you.
Move.
Second. Moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, Mrs. Page.
So, very similar to what, um, Christine said, is the elementary handbooks, the only changes we made were critical.
It is changing the names of our new school to remember, a new curriculum director and a new special education director. Those are the only changes.
Perfect.
Pretty cool, the handbook.
Right.
We did actually discuss a lot of the changes with respect to COVID as we're going through, but realized that all of our changes in practice were actually in the reopening plan. So, for the moment, we figured the reopening plan would guide parents for, for the opening rule, we can certainly incorporate the reopening plan into a interim handbook.
Yeah. No reason to reinvent the wheel, definitely. That's great. All right. I'd like to have a motion to approve as presented, the elementary student handbooks.
Move.
Moved. Second, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you so much. All right. So, we get to now, the next section is the approval of policies. So, there are two policies, um, the face covering policy and the harassment policy. Um, under these two policies, uh, these have come down from the M A S C. And, um, I believe that the language, again, everything is fluid, but the language is necessary. Um, Donna, do you have any discussion on these policies or any other, obviously, committee member? I think they were pretty clear as presented. Um, I'd like to have a motion to approve the face covering policy as presented.
Move.
Moved. Second, second. Any discussion? All in favor? And also now a motion to approve the harassment policy as presented. Second. Second. Any discussion?
That's going to replace our current.
That will replace, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that link will follow suit.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And now, um, Mrs. Smith, inclusion matters update?
Um, I actually don't have an update for you tonight, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, all right. Under warrants, the warrants. Subcommittee report. The following, following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year twenty, twenty and twenty-twenty-one. There were five bill warrants. First is dated July thirtieth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, bill warrant dated August sixth of twenty-twenty in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. A bill warrant dated August thirteenth of twenty-twenty dated, excuse me, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. A bill warrant dated August twentieth of twenty-twenty in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and four cents. And the last bill warrant dated August twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents. There were three payroll warrants. First dated July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. There are, uh, it looks like, uh, fiscal year twenty and a fiscal year twenty-one split payroll. The first was for ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And the second half was three hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. The second payroll warrant dated August seventh of twenty-twenty in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. And then, the third is dated August twenty-first of twenty-twenty in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed, they are available in the selectman's office for review. Okay. Now, under public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. So, um, under the setup that we have right now, I would ask that, um, I will read the questions, um, I will identify, uh, the questionnaire and I will read the questions and then if Mr. Barwell could help field wherever the answers may be.
So, so, yeah, before you start reading. I don't know if they can hear us when we speak because we're not that close to them.
Um, oh, yeah, they're saying can't hear very well.
But I think if we unmute on our computers, it's going to be feedback, right?
So, can you, or I was going to say, can you just move up there while you do this part?
Or do you want to just, I thought they, they could just state their question? The person who wants to ask it rather than read them or? Can they call in, you mean?
Yeah, they can just unmute themselves and ask their, the question themselves rather than type it out.
So, Mr. Barwell, if you could maybe, um, make that announcement that if the person is, is logged in on the Zoom, if they could just, um, unmute themselves and then they could ask their question. They will need to identify themselves though by their names, please?
So, they should put their name in the chat.
Well, if they're going to be on the phone though.
They'll all talk at once though, how we're going to call on them.
Can we call on them? And you, Mr. Barwell, can you just call on, like, the first person that asked a question? Was Robin Draganetti? If you could ask her to.
All right. Perfect.
That's it. So, I think we're asking for the people at home who are able to ask a question, but we do so over the phone, uh, to get through all the questions and answer them as we can. Who's the first person? Robin Draganetti, if you could ask her a question?
And so, if we could help, we can try to pull this forward.
Do you want me to go over there? Do you have to?
Where is the microphone?
Do you have to? Do you have to get that close? I mean, I could just switch places with you, Mr. Barwell, no?
That's fine.
Mark, if you come onto your need, won't you go over there?
Well, I just feel like if people want to put their name and address in the chat and then one by one, they can unmute themselves and ask their question.
I think it worked really well last time when you read the questions and then people answered. They, and then if somebody wants to unmute themselves, they will.
Right.
Yeah. But, and I know you answered this one, but I think it would, if you want to read both, then that would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Do you want to come here and read off?
Do you have that there? Sure. That would be fantastic. See, my glasses just. Improvising.
The first question was from, uh, Robin Draganetti. If a teacher is exposed symptomatic or tests positive and has to be out of school for several, up to fourteen days, are they required to use their sick days, particularly if they are exposed at school? What precautions, I'm sorry, what protections do teachers have so they are not using all of their sick time? And I have responded in the chat that we are currently in negotiations with the teacher union, so all of those issues will be addressed.
Yes. That is, that is accurate. Yep. Part, part of what we're doing is like all other school districts and associations, we're in collective bargaining right now during this process.
All right. And the next question is from, um, Jamie Pope. How is a close contact defined?
Good question. Mrs. Edixon, are you still online?
I'm still here.
Okay. Can you answer that? Um, I know we, we talked about that and that is part of your guidance.
Yes. So, uh, close contact is defined, and this is just from DPH and Betsy and CDC, um, as someone who has been within six feet of a person who has tested positive. Um, and then you knew that close contact means they've been within five feet for at least fifteen minutes, um, while the person was infectious. So, if infectious, so if the person has symptoms, then we go back two days from the time they obtained symptomatic. If the person has no symptoms who was diagnosed as positive, then we go back two days from the date that they tested positive.
Thank you.
Thank you. And second question. Am I allowed to ask a follow-up question then? Is that you, Jamie Pope? Yeah, it's Jamie Pope. My thought is, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Um, so you're saying within six feet, and I think that's where, um, as a parent, I still need a little bit of clarification, um, because we've been told that our, our students will be nose to nose, six feet apart. So, I just, I want some specificity as a parent. If my child is six feet apart from that other child that has tested positive, is my child considered a close contact or is my child excluded as a close contact because they are outside of that six feet nose to nose? Thank you.
So, this is a really good question and this was a question that we had, um, for Dr. Murphy. Um, and I think that, you know, sometimes these are where the gray areas come in and I would like clarification for that too. My feeling is, is that we're looking at seating charts, we're looking at bus assignments. I think everything is going to be very, um, documented so that we're able to determine who a close contact is. Um, but that will be up to the Board of Health and Dr. Murphy to really clarify that.
So, we can get more clarification for the next time, um, before the thirty-first, we put out the information. We'll, we'll check with Dr. Murphy tomorrow or within the next couple of days so we have that by the end of the week.
Good. And, um, Ms. Pope, you also had a second question. If it's okay, I'll just read it. That was in the chat.
Yes, that, that's fine. I just, sorry, I just had a follow-up from the other one.
Oh, that's fantastic. Do you want to just ask your question or would you rather I read?
Sure. Um, so, for instance, um, some, some students, uh, as you mentioned, have alternate diagnoses, whether it's allergies or they're extremely susceptible to, say, um, strep throat. And I just had a clarification question. Um, you mentioned that anyone with a fever or symptomatic would have to be out for seventy-two hours post, uh, you know, symptoms. So, say a child, you know, got sent home for symptoms, they got an alternate diagnosis of, say, strep throat, right? Something that previously we'd be on antibiotics and twenty-four hours later, they could go back to school. If that diagnosis is confirmed, do we go back to that regular protocol or do we still have to be out seventy-two hours? And this is just so that we can make sure we have sick coverage care for our kids.
Sure. So, um, Dr. Murphy felt very strongly that we maintain that seventy-two hour rule, which just would allow for more of a buffer zone, um, even with an alternate diagnosis, that there was still a potential COVID situation. Um, so, his recommendation was to maintain seventy-two hours symptom-free across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Sarah Olivera, do you want to ask your question or would you like me to read it?
Uh, I can read it. Sarah Olivera. I was just curious as to whether or not teachers will be notified of, if students have tested positive, if we're determined that close contacts are only the ones within six feet. I think it's hard to determine, um, whether or not the student has walked up, uh, a teacher has walked upward down that aisle where the student is. So, I'm curious as to whether teachers will be notified or not.
So, I, I think that, I can answer that. Um, so, that defers to the Board of Health and we will be assisting them with contact tracing. So, if they need more information about whether the teacher was walking up and down the room, um, you know, to identify whether you were a close contact, we need to get that information. So, you know, the KIPPA, it's a need-to-know basis, um, to conduct the contact tracing.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, I think the, the rule of a close contact and what's being determined as a close contact is somewhat worrisome considering that, you know, they're not. you know, there are not constant eyes in the classroom. So if a student, for example, gets up to go to the bathroom and passes a student, I understand that it's not that 15-minute rule, but in my eyes, a close contact is really determined by the kids that were in that classroom. For example, the middle senior high school, where we're in the block schedule for 80 minutes. So I think that's something that should be nailed down for everyone's safety.
I think, Ms. Dickerson, am I accurate in saying that we're following DESI and CDC guidelines? What is the definition of a close contact? Within six feet for 15 minutes or more?
Yes, absolutely. We have to follow those guidelines, and because the Board of Health is the governing body for the contact tracing, we defer to their process. So we would be assisting them with providing information to clarify who is a close contact.
My second question is, if a teacher is asked to quarantine because they are identified as close contact, are the teachers required to provide their own testing? And especially considering that this may happen multiple times throughout our school year?
So I know, I think the answer to your question is, as far as I know, yes, because we don't have the ability. Well, I mean, I can't speak to that as a, maybe as a union question. I don't know. I do know that we might have the ability to access the mobile testing, depending on what the situation looks like. That information just came out to all districts. So there is a potential for that, and that would go through the Board of Health as well.
And I do think more information is coming with more testing and rapid response. And I also know that we, you know, that's a discussion we've had. It'll be an ongoing discussion with West Bridgewater Board of Health to see what they have for any testing available. Sure, please, thank you.
Robin Draganetti had a follow-up question. Where is the district presently in teaching negotiations? If PD starts on Thursday, I'm concerned that negotiations are still in process. Are you close to an agreement? Or are there outstanding teacher concerns that as parents we should be aware of? And then I replied to that, that the school committee and the West Bridgewater Education Association, we have a very strong working relationship. And I do not anticipate any delays, but we are in the negotiation process this week.
And just to clarify that the professional development, the teacher's first day is next Monday, so it's a Monday, not Thursday.
The 31st.
Correct.
This is a question from Amanda Peralt. For the seventh graders, what is the status on your Chromebooks?
Right now, we have ordered Chromebooks from multiple different sources, some through the state and some through our contract that we use for our other Chromebooks. We've been told that the ones from the state will come in sooner, so we are waiting for them to come in. We do have some backup plans that they're not in on time. But we are not alone in having a delay in technology being sent across the nation. We're hoping that they'll all be in by the time the students start on the 16th, and then we'll arrange the distribution days.
Thank you. A question from Jerry Schaefer. On Friday, DESI sent out a new document that asks districts to provide an opportunity for teachers to have their children attend their home schools on all possible days. Is West Bridgewater planning to accommodate that? The town I teach in already sent a survey out, so I want to make sure I didn't miss it here.
We're working with our West Bridgewater teachers for our residents of the town. And again, that's part of the negotiations. But certainly, we have discussed our feelings that we can help out our teachers. We certainly want to do that as much as possible.
I'm sorry, this is Jerry Schaefer here, and I just wanted to clarify my question a little bit. So from what I understand, the town I teach in does not provide my childcare, but the town I reside in so that my children could attend their home school so that I can go teach in my district? Is that not correct?
That is something that we're looking at, but in the guidance, it does say a space is available. So we'd have to look at the space available. So if you want to, you know, send me an email, we can certainly look at the spaces. But as of right now, we're looking at the West Bridgewater teachers who live in town.
So only the teachers who live in this town and teach in this town?
We're looking at, that's part of our negotiations with the teachers. And we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And a question from Danielle Anderson. Also for the seventh grade orientation, will we be able to get the kids scheduled? I think she may be, when will we be able to get the kids scheduled?
Yeah. Right now, I'm reworking the schedule, so I'm hoping she'll have them by then, but if not, it'll be a future.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. And Amanda Peralt has a question. Have the janitorial staff schedules been changed so that there is a janitor in the school during school hours? Currently, Spring Street does not have a janitor until later on in the day.
Yes, that is something that we are working on with Mrs. Hamlin, head of building the grounds.
And Robin Draganetti. Similar to Amanda's question, I believe Amanda Peralt. Does each building have a full-time nurse and the space to provide nursing services to all students? How is the district handling students who become symptomatic during the day?
Okay. Yes, we do have full-time. We have nurses that are in each building. They're full-time during the school hours. We do have an area for students who are sick. We have a waiting area, space that's been identified in each of the different buildings. I don't know, Mrs. Dickerson, if I did say anything or if you want to add anything?
I know, I think that that's, we, you know, had a lot of discussions about the medical waiting room and what would make the most sense. And it's definitely a challenge, but I think we have a good plan in place to accommodate what potential situations we might see. So, yeah, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Robin Draganetti. I have, I also have some concerns. I also have some concerns around how the remote portions are going to be delivered with masks, et cetera. Particularly if some classes are using the hover cam or the room-in-zoom method. I worry that students are not going to be able to access their teacher, much like we are unable to hear many of the questions and comments right now.
Well, just, that's a, that's a good point. And thank you for bringing that up. The hover cam will be set up much closer proximity to the teacher, above the distance that Mrs. Sullivan is right now and I was before. So sound should not be an issue. The goal is to have the hover cam in a position where it's only focused on the teacher and the board in front. So that should mitigate any issues with sound quality in the classroom.
Thank you. And Jason Mitchell. The only mic that seems to be working is Mars. Why are school committee members not muting themselves? I believe that says the echo and the vibration, correct?
That is, that is correct. I think the mics, I believe, are more for the, that's going out live into town on the cable, where if all the different computers were on, then there would be a vibration and be a lot of interruption.
And Julie Hamlin had made a statement. She states, I am working on hiring a part-time person that will allow us to have coverage starting at 9:00 a.m.
That's at the Spring Street School.
That was at the Spring Street. And Mary Graziano had stated that the audio is pretty rough.
Again, it's, this was not the ideal setup with the audio using the hover cam where it's located.
Jason Mitchell asks, can committee members unmute themselves when asking questions? I don't believe we can do that because of the technology that we just explained, the echoing and.
Do you have a specific question? That's why we're just marking it.
Oh, that's a good point. Mr. Mitchell, if you have a specific question that Mrs. Dickson.
I don't think you've referred to questions before, maybe?
Yeah.
I think we are hearing the text today, which we apologize.
Okay. Robin Draganetti. Also in regard to remote teaching, will fully remote students be accessing when you be teachers?
Yes, they will. We're finalizing those plans. I know it's taking a little longer than people may have hoped, but the plans that we're developing, and we went through today as administrative team, we feel provide a really good mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning for our students. So we feel we have a very strong plan. We feel we'd much rather have our West Bridgewater teachers teaching the West Bridgewater curriculum than outsourcing it to another type of program, which would include much less synchronous learning. That is our plan as of right now. Of course, circumstances beyond our control could come up, but that's our plan right now as an administrative team.
And the rest of the question was, if the vast majority of students are accessing hybrid, who's teaching fully remote students? And then she goes on. I'm hoping there is an answer to this question. And I'm concerned that there's no agreement with the teachers just yet as we all plan for 9:15. And again, we're currently in negotiations, so I don't anticipate any brilliance with that, Mr. Barwell, if you could answer that.
Yeah, and part of our negotiations is looking at all different plans, the hyper plan, the fully remote plan as well. So again, those are answers that we'll have more clarity on once we complete our negotiations.
And Julie Hamlin, this is a question for you by Amanda Peralt. Julie, will that person be starting by Monday when teachers report?
Are you talking about the Spring Street School?
I would imagine so.
And she's not even answering. Certainly, again, I'm not sure the answer, but I think the intent, and I'll defer this to Dulay, is to have it more so for cleaning the classrooms in the lunchtime and the transition time when the students are here, not as much for the professional development where we just have the staff in the building.
Exactly. And Jennifer Kline, where he asks, what are the hours for the PT historian at Spring Street School? So maybe that was just me. They'll be there during the school hours if the students are there.
And we recognize that as a need. We recognize this as something that we wanted, we needed to add, again, to help with both the preschool and the kindergarten to make sure that their areas are clean and safe.
Julie just, well, she answered this earlier. She stated, Julie Hamlin stated, if not by Monday, it will be by the time students return. Julie Hamlin went further on to state, I'm hoping to bring John in at 9:00 and have a PT historian cover the later part of the day with time between the classrooms. It would be a four-hour shift. We'll determine start and end time after I talk to Justin and John about it. And I believe that we did answer all of Robin Draganetti's questions. That might have been a late statement by Mr. Robert Lee. And Michelle McLeod asks, following up on the previous question on sickness, if a child has known seasonal allergies and is out of school due to symptoms of allergies, will they need a doctor's note to return to school?
So who we talked about? Julie, want to answer?
Sure. This is my million-dollar question as the school nurse. I know what I see in the fall is a lot of allergies. And, you know, I did ask that of Dr. Murphy. And we do need to have documentation if there is a diagnosis of chronic allergies or something that would explain symptoms. So anything that is a chronic situation, I need to have, or your school nurse needs to have that documented so that we're able to discern what we're seeing with your, with your child.
Thank you.
Thank you. And a question from Jamie Pope. Is there anyone from the Board of Health that can be present at the next meeting to answer the questions that are being deferred regarding close contact and testing, et cetera?
I can certainly contact the Board of Health.
That's a great idea.
I know we've met with the, both Rob Casper and April Penos, who are both involved, so we can certainly do that.
And Christine Pantowski regarding HIPAA. Wouldn't it be safe to assume that a teacher has been within six feet of a student? And she asked, if I could just read that. Sorry, just confused by this point.
At this point, we're practicing social distancing with our students and our staff. If they can't be within, or they need to be within six feet, then we do, you know, it shouldn't be for extended 15-minute period of time. And I think that's why we set up the classrooms the way we have and also the teaching spaces the way we have. So it's, it's certainly not, what we're looking for is to be within that six feet for student to student or teacher to student.
And a question from Perry White. Each, thank you. Will children, in particular the younger grades, be penalized for not being able to log in live during the remote learning times?
In a lot of the remote learning times, there will be live synchronous learning. We do hope that parents can support that if it's a regular school day for them. So that's the expectation. There will be other parts of those lessons that are taped, or there'll be asynchronous learning opportunities. But this is Dulay, maybe Dulay. I think our expectation is that if at all possible they're there signing in, we do need to take attendance. That's the DESI requirement that we take attendance for all students every single day.
Right, so the time that they're learning from home, that is considered a school day? So if they're not present, they are considered absent, but by no means will we be penalizing children for not being, things come up, just as if things come up if you have to be out of school. So teachers will be able to set up some accommodations for those families, because I urge you to stay in close communication with the teacher to let them know if certain situations come up, and they'll be sure that your child gets what they need.
And that's just another example of how we probably set up the handbook so that parents will have a reference point to go to, and they'll be able to get the notes. That looks like I've read all of the chat. If there are any callers that would like to now participate in a public forum?
What about that fire safety? Like, all hands up?
We will have a talk to the fire chief, and we will have fire bills. We're mandated by law to have fire bills within the first few days of school. So we'll be doing that. I will also be practicing lockdown. I don't think we want to throw out all the good we've done with training for our students.
Right, I don't like lockdowns. It's like pretty close to us.
But they don't have to be. We need to call a shelter in place. Again, we want to prepare our students and staff if there were ever a reason to either lockdown or to evacuate. Well, it just may look a little bit different, but that's part of the talk we'll have. Teachers will have with students. Again, it's still important to evacuate into lockdown at appropriate times.
And just so you did, if you didn't hear that question, it was, what about fire safety? That Mr. Barwell, Mr. Swann, if you can. I'll give you the chair.
Okay. So the next regular school committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 14th at 6:30 p.m. here in the middle senior high school Learning Commons. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved, second? Any discussion and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you so much.